...that everyone received the meeting notice and adopt the agenda. If we could rise to question play?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, as with every justice for all.
Alright, so this meeting is the committee of the whole school board meeting, so if you have comments or questions along the way, please feel free to ask. First thing that we're going to be doing tonight is to interview candidates for our vacant school board position, and we've had four applicants, and the personnel committee has had a chance to look at these, and all the board members should have also had a chance to look at the applications. And so what we would like to do is, in alphabetical order, have each of the candidates come up, and you can sit at the table, so that you have a barrier between us. And then, just to give a little overview, a summary of why you think that you would make a good board member with us, and then we have the opportunity to ask questions. And then, at the end, after all four have gone through that, then the boards will vote, and see where we're at. So it does need a majority of the board, so we would need four votes for one of the candidates, in order to be successful. So, with that, I think we have a candidate that starts with B. So Luann, if you would like to come up and...
Good evening, and this is a little scary, a little scary. But thank you for considering me, for filling in the seat. Having been a former school board member in Oshkosh, I appreciate, not just tonight, but all the long hours, and all the tough decisions you have to make sometimes for our kids. I say "our kids" because now I'm a Hales Corner residence. I moved here a couple of months ago, so we're still kind of getting settled, and I love it here already. We've got some great neighbors, and the first thing I did, even before I got here, was to start to visit the school board, because I hear a lot about public education. I believe that, of all the things that, you know, I can spend my time on, I want to make sure that I'm doing all that I can, now I don't have children in the schools, but as a community member, to both support and improve our public education. I do really feel that good schools, good community, you can't have a good community without good schools. So, I already sense the wonderful parent involvement in this district, and community support for the schools, because the first thing I noticed when I got here, was that I was invited to the block party. So I came to that, and got to observe a lot of the activities that are going on in your schools, and the great parent support and community support. So that was really, really fun for me to see, and I got to watch your middle school band play, which was awesome. I'm like, how can they be so good, it's only September? I think it was September. So school just started, but compliments to you, and to your staff, and to your students for doing such a great job in the music department already. So I came from, I raised my kids, to make a long story short, because I know you have a lot else on your agenda tonight, I came from, I raised my kids in Oshkosh, and then my husband and I moved to Alabama about four years ago, I guess it is now, and I was doing school board development both here and down in, eventually, school board development in Wisconsin, and then down in Alabama. Now, while I was down there, people kept saying, "Are you going to stay, are you going to stay?", and we said, "Well, if we have grandchildren, I might want to come back." So in the meantime, our daughter, my daughter and her husband, who are both teachers in the Milwaukee area, moved, settled here, and we have a grandson. So when we found out that was happening, we moved back. Plus, I have to admit, Wisconsin's my home, and when you move away, you realize how much you do love it. So we've been back a little over a year now, here in Wisconsin. I'm involved in a lot of things already, but of course, the first thing I wanted to get involved in was education, and there's some initiatives going on in Milwaukee that I've been really interested in, in terms of improving the Milwaukee schools as well. I guess you all got copies of all that information, so I'm just going to stop right there. I do want to say, I hope you will consider me to be with you. The other thing that very much excited me, the reason I threw my hat in the ring, was because you are adopting district goals. And one thing I know about school boards and school districts, if you look at what's going on in very high achieving districts, that's what's going on. So I feel like, in the next four months, working with your leadership team, and with the, I don't know if that's a new process, or a changing process, I think it's an exciting time to be on your board, because there's very effective things going on around focus on the goals, and the ones that you've set are very good, so I would love to be a part of that. And to provide the kind of leadership that you're going to need. Not only that, there's changes going on, as you well know, in the state with policy, and some of these changes are going to be very, very good that are coming up, but they're controversial, and they're tough, and helping to keep the focus on some of these changes around accountability and teacher performance, all under the umbrella of what can we do to, like, close the skills gap everyone's talking about, are challenging, challenging. So I want to be part of, again, the changes that are going to be occurring, that continue to really do, you know, reach kids that maybe we don't normally reach, and make sure that our high performing students are getting all that they need when they leave the school system. Okay, enough said. Questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I do. In your cover letter, you state, "In the late 90s, I served for six years on Oshkosh School Board, so I am familiar with the role of the board. Since that time, many changes in education policy have occurred, and I have learned many things that I wish I had known when I was on the board. Can you expand on what you would like different, or know differently?"
The biggest, the biggest thing that I've learned, when I look back, is that I can remember many board meetings where we looked at test score data, and we looked at results for kids, and we looked at some low performing schools, and high performing schools, we looked at low math scores consistently. And the thing that I've learned since then, is that we can reach kids, that back then, I sort of accepted as, well, we have to wait for parents to get involved, or we have to wait for other things to, other factors to change. But what I've learned in working in two different states, and touring lots of high performing schools, and particularly looking at the research on school board governance, what's happening, what are boards doing in high achieving systems? That's, you know, what changed is my belief in what we, and what, how we can reach kids in poverty particularly, or kids with language barriers, kids with disabilities. When you separate out what are some of the reasons we think, or the reasons we know why kids are not achieving, I had to ask myself eventually, and I had to ask school boards eventually, are these factors about the kid's real cognitive ability to learn, or is it about their, the adults in the kid's lives not doing the right thing? And once I personally sort of separated that out, and realized, well, if it's about the adults, we can fix those things. It's a matter of what can we do to build the public will, and where can we go in our community to find the kind of support that we might need to reach kids? Because it's the teacher in the classroom that makes the biggest difference, and that's the second thing I learned. Because there's, you know, you sit there, and you look at all this data and research, and the administration brings all kinds of cool stuff to you sometimes, and you wonder what, what makes the biggest difference? And eventually, I came to understand that the biggest difference is the classroom teacher. Parents matter, classroom size matters, facilities, all of those things matter. So I'm not saying that they don't, but getting really clear about, at least, when you have limited resources, where can you get the biggest bang? What's going to impact students the most? It's going to be teacher professional development, and that link between teachers and student performance. So that's just a couple of things I learned since leaving the board.
Question?
You mentioned you reviewed the district goals that we've established, adopted. Would you add or modify any of those?
Well, there's a lot in those. Those five, I saw five goals, but I thought tonight's report has four? Is it, is it the five goals that you're sticking with? We can talk about that later, but the number one goal is the number one goal, the academic performance. I see a need to make sure that you get clear about what those goals mean, and how you're going to measure that performance, and I heard you talking about that already. So, to answer your question, Mr. Shaw, that's what I would look for as you advance this process forward. It's not so much about changing the goals, they're very broad, and they're very good, and I do believe they're right on, they're right on the money about what it's going to take, to make sure that every child graduates from Whittonall, and is prepared for the future. So I think you're on the right track. The other, the other thing that you'll have to watch is the time factor, and how much of it is really administrative detail that you just sort of have, you can get a report on? And what is, what do you want to bring to the full board, to really analyze and look at, in terms of, are we making a difference? Are we reaching these goals? And then the other thing you'll want to look for is, if this is, if this is the bar we've set as a board, and we said, this is the bar we want to reach, the question you always want to ask is, what's it going to take to get there? So that you're applying both, they write him on a pressure to achieve the goals, and you're willing to provide the support, and the staff feels that. They feel both, we're going to be doing more, we're working as a team collaboratively, as a board and administrative team, and we're also bringing the community along, and we're going to provide the support. We also feel like the board's going to support us, because reaching the higher levels, when you're already a high performing district, is tough. Right? You're already a high performing district, so you're really talking about some challenging goals, and I think they're great.
Thank you.
I do, my question's pretty simple. Regardless of the decision of the board tonight, is your intent and able to run for the school board?
I'm not sure on that. I, I just knew that I wanted to understand what this board was doing from a community standpoint. I wanted to understand the direction you were setting for these schools, and then I was going to look at whether or not I wanted to get involved. And then when the seat opened up, I decided, yeah, right now's a good time, because we're talking a short term commitment, and you're focusing on goals. And I've got some experience with that, so I thought that was a pretty good fit to start with. Now, as to whether I'd run again, I know there's only a short window to decide, but I would say at this point, unless there's some real barriers that show up, I'm probably likely to, but I don't want to make a promise or a commitment at this time. I just think it's so important. It's just so important, that I want to make sure that it's the right choice for me, my family, and, you know, for the district. So if I get on the board, I'd have a chance to really sort of look at that as well. Or if I don't, you know, I'll still be, you know, looking at that. So, you're welcome.
Alright, thank you.
Well, thank you again, appreciate your time.
So Heather? You're next.
And how did you want us to begin again?
If you could just give us a small summary?
Just an overall view of why we're here? Why I'm here? Well, I want to first thank you for this opportunity. This is something I've been thinking about doing for a couple of years now, and when the seat became vacant, I thought that this might be a good way to start, and I do plan on, I had planned on running, even if the seat hadn't opened up, in April or the following election. I was just kind of waiting to see where things were at. But then this, this opportunity arose. I'm running, and I think, as the other four people, and all of you sit on the board, we kind of share the same characteristic that's hard to put into words, but I feel very blessed. I've always felt very blessed, and I've wanted to do something to give back to the community, and as, I think I started, my parents were a great example of that, and there was a lot of service done, growing up, and then I joined the military, and once I was out of the military and had children, I've always been involved in my church, in volunteer capacity, and have done as much as I possibly can do in the school system, starting with, when my daughter started in K4, I was, in K5, I was helping the vice principal over at Honey Creek Elementary, write grants for funds, because I had had experience doing that in college at UW-Milwaukee. I helped write grants for the Betty Brin Children's Museum, and also for the AIDS Center of Wisconsin. So I've always kind of had, I've always been inclined to help in the nonprofit world. And when I think about the two things that are, that have contributed to the most, to the success and happiness of my family, it's first faith, and it's second education. So those are the two areas that I devote, that I devote as much time as I can to giving back. I've been a Hales Corners resident for over nine years now. I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. I would like a bigger house, now that we have a third child, but we are always looking within the district, which can be, which is a little bit of a challenge. I'm running because I've been, you know, as time permits, I've been more and more involved at the PTO level, and I'm currently the PTO secretary, involved in just about every event that takes place, helped at the block party, helped middle school, it kind of drops off a little bit, but I helped with the eighth grade graduation, and anywhere, anytime they needed food, or things for the luncheons, and such. And I guess I'm just ready to take it to the next level. I am so, so excited, for the first time, like, I've always, I've always felt like Whittonall was a great school district. It was, when we were moving, when we moved up into Wisconsin, we initially just found a place kind of close to downtown Milwaukee, but when we realized that we needed to find a good school district for our kids, and somewhere to settle down, Whittonall was recommended by many people. We compared districts, we compared property taxes, and we chose Hales Corners. But I have to tell you that we sent Alex, who is now a freshman. She went to Honey Creek Elementary in K5, and their principal there was very innovative at the time. It was a very individualized education system there. So like, for my daughter, she was reading at a first grade level, so they would, she would read with the first graders, and they were on a block system, which they have implemented this year, here in Whittonall. So the entire school was reading at the same time, so this gave them the ability to move kids around, wherever they, wherever they needed help, or wherever they needed to be challenged. And they did the same thing in math and science. And then they did stay in their own classrooms, and due to a lot of teacher collaboration, the, they were able to, one teacher, if she had a great unit on, let's say dinosaurs, she taught that, she taught that to the rest of the classes, and if another teacher had a great unit on, you know, something else. And talking with Mr. DiAcquisto this year, it sounds like all those pieces are beginning to be implemented, that they're on a block schedule, that the map testing is just awesome. My fourth grader was, she was never identified as having, being above proficient, and because of the map testing, Mrs. Roth was able to catch those scores, and then test her, and realize, we need to be doing more with her. And I would like to see, I think Whittonall is absolutely going in the right direction with that. I think the teacher collaboration has been a huge success, and I just, I'm really excited. Some of you know, I decided to send my freshman to Martin Luther. It was not an anti-Whittonall decision. I will probably be the only child that goes to private school, because I'm so excited about what I'm seeing now, and seeing the individualized education that Sam and Job will be getting as they come through. And the decision, when people ask me, was strictly, it was teacher to student ratio, and a really individualized program there for her. She's very, you know, for her goals, and for the personality she has, I felt like those pieces weren't quite, hadn't been in place long enough, and weren't quite in place, to get her where we want, where she wants to be, and where we're trying to support her. But like I said, I have no plans on, I have, with everything that is being done, and I know of future, the goals, and looking at the goals of the board, I, I will, you know, I foresee both Sam and Job remaining in Whittonall, all throughout their education.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah. In your cover letter, you state, "Currently, there is not a member of the school board with a child at the elementary level. I believe that I could offer ideas, insight, and knowledge specific to the elementary level of education." Can you expand on that?
Well, and it doesn't mean that I don't, I wouldn't ignore or not see the value of what's needed at the middle school or high school, any less. But I think, just being part of the PTO, and I'm there, you know, doing recess duty, and I'm room parent, so I'm really at the ground level, seeing what's going on at the elementary school. I talked, Mr. DiAcquisto is so accessible to all the parents, that you can ask him about any policy that's coming down the pipe from the school board, and he'll tell you, and be honest about how it's working, how it's not working. As you know, there's a lot of new programs, a lot of, you know, many things that are being implemented. I think it just helps to have diversity on the board. There's many members that don't have children in the district, which, but that doesn't mean that you care any less about the kids, it's just having, you know, there's a couple of people that just have high schoolers in the district, middle schoolers in the district, and so I just think a diverse board is just more successful.
Thank you. We've had a lot of concerns and issues around communication, both internal and external, in the past. How, what would be some of your recommendations to improve the communication between school board, administration, and the public?
I will say that I've seen a big improvement, you know, we, there were a couple of big policy changes over the couple of years, and you've heard from, you know, people like me, and I think communication, not, the communication not given early enough was a big problem. I think, I was one of those people that would hear an idea, and, you know, change my mind once I had more information, but there just wasn't a lot of time, and so you kind of had things explode in a very short period of time. I think the use of the email system, I think technology is, I think more and more parents are using that, but even as a PTO, like, when we're trying to get information, I mean, we can send emails, and paper home, and it, you know, there's just going to, it's a challenge. I would say that I think, as being a member of the board, I'm also a parent, so I'm going to, and I know there's always been discussion about, what do you advertise, and what don't you advertise? Do they need to know that the high school needs more copy paper? Well, probably not, but do they need to know that maybe the collaboration is going to begin, and times are going to be changing, or bus schedules are going to be changing? Absolutely. I think really, getting the information to the principals, or to whichever, to whatever school, and having the principals spread the information, really needs, is really the most successful way. So anything that, that is, that you feel is important, needs to really be communicated with the administration, to get out to the parents. As far as community, you know, you do have the viewpoint that goes out, but maybe, I would even maybe increase that, increase that kind of information out, especially if, if it's important, budgetary, you know, meetings are going to happen. You'd like to say, "We're here, the meetings are open, you can come and find out what's going on at any time," but people just don't do that. And so then they hear about, you know, taxes being raised, or lowered, or maintaining, and are caught off guard. So anything that you foresee, I mean, I would try and get literature out to the community. And I mean, you have to look at cost and things like that. Thank you.
Well, it just so happens that it worked out, that alphabetically ladies were first. So, now, next, John Jones. The same format, if you could give us a little summary of why you think you would, are you running, or would like to be on the school board?
Well, here we are again. I'm not sure if this is more comfortable, or less comfortable than the forums that, well, as you guys know, I've expressed an interest to be on the board for the past few years, and I, I've desired strongly to contribute to the direction the board is taking the district, and I like the changes that have been going on, I like the kinds of things that I see. I have a rather extensive background in teamwork, and how everybody with a set of common goals, as they were talked about earlier, can get a lot done, and can get a lot done in the right direction. Background being the, several years in the military with a crew aircraft, everybody has a rather, you know, a common set of rather steep goals, and you've got to be successful. So, that, with that kind of background, I think it's the same sort of thing as, as a school board, in trying to accomplish the goals that you set out for. It's important to be able to work together, and, and I think I have a, an ability to, a proven ability to do that. But I'd like to be part of where the board takes the district, for, number one, for the kids, and my child, of course, being part of that. So, we moved here first, oh, I think about 12 years ago, we did pick the place we live because of the district, because we were planning on starting a family, and we've been here ever since. My son was born in the district, and our intention is to have him graduate from the district. That being said, I don't like being a passive person, just on the bleachers, I like to see what's going on, and participate and contribute where I can. And so it's a natural thing for me to desire to, to be on the board. I've, I think they picked up on that possibly, kind of early at the, at Hales Corners Elementary, because my son was in kindergarten when the teachers and other parents first started talking to me about concerns they had, and that kind of stuff. So, just continued to, to have the desire to try to serve for the board.
Okay, thank you.
I do. Again, in your cover letter, you state, "I believe I have displayed a level of dedication and loyalty to the district, to include the children it educates, the residents it serves, and the employees it retains, to warrant consideration for this vicious position." You talked to me about, what did you talk about, your dedication and loyalty to the district? district?
Yeah, I, I try to be involved where I can. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the party, the block party this last, this last season. I know we had talked about helping out with the block party and I was concerned I would be out of town. And in fact, I was, I was out working for the Air Force. But I, I've been involved quite a bit in, in communication between parents and administrators and some staff on different issues that have come up. I've been outspoken and speak up at the board meetings to, to raise questions and concerns that, or ideas that not only I've had, but other folks that have, have come to me have. And I, as, as you know, I've been rather persistent at, at trying to up the level of, of participation so the determination factor is, is kind of self-explanatory.
Thank you. John, you're, you're quite familiar with the strategic plan and direction. Are any of those, that's a strategic level. Are there any specific tactics you would have under each one of those or even just one of those that we should consider?
You speaking about your goals and such?
Or strategic direction, right?
Yeah.
Achievement, career readiness, culture, climate, communication.
Well, I've got to tell you, I've, I've been, I've been very interested in, in what's been going on lately with, like with, with Tony's presentation that he did about bringing in the college level and the cooperation between the high school staff and college staff to bring college courses to the school and, and make those upper level courses more meaningful, directly transcend into, into college credits and, and pipeline kids right, right into college and be able to serve them that way. I think that is one level that's, it's, I found that, that is one of the most exciting presentations I've seen for the, the upper level courses in the time I've been going to the board. I think that's great. I, I guess my point of bringing that up is what I see is stuff moving in the right direction. That's a kind of progress that interests me quite a bit. Another thing that you guys, I feel that you, you've done, that's good progress, is the collaborative release. I know the teachers have been after it for a while. It's been entertained by the district before. The latest conversations I've had with, with staff indicate that it's, they're, they're not wasting their time. They're definitely putting their time to use. I have heard some, some parents stress about it still a little bit, trying to work out some details and stuff still even, even this far into the school year. But overall, I think that kind of thing has been, has been a, a good step forward. It's the kind of system I grew up in, collaborative release. Those are the kinds of things that if you continue to have that leading forward type of, of approach, I think, and that's a general answer, but if you continue to have that leading forward type of approach in how you, in how you try to reach your goals, I think it's bound to be successful. In doing such, I try to bring a level of, of kind of critical thinking to evaluating the, the approaches to some of these goals, such that, you know, somebody comes to the board with an idea on this or that, or you, the board comes up with an idea, you want to try and find research to either promote it or, or discard it and, and so you can keep moving in the upward direction.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Rick.
My name is Rick Culliff and I believe, I really don't have any ulterior motives for offering my name in your application pool and I appreciate the fact you've given me the opportunity to come tonight. And what I really want to offer the school district is my services. My tenure in the district included 12 years, 11 as treasurer and one as president. And you really have a few short months where you need an interim to fill in without, without having a swearing in session tonight. It's really less than five months. So I think I can offer someone who doesn't have a learning curve can help you hit the ground running. At this point in my life cycle, I don't have any ulterior motives or underlying agendas. I'm a blank slate. I can, I just offer myself and, and that's really, I mean, I don't have anything else. I've got the credentials, I've, you've got them all before you. It doesn't mean that just because, it, it just means I have, you know, civic-minded service at heart and would look forward to helping the district in any way possible.
In your answer to question one, you state, I have, you desire to, to serve the community and you go on to say, I have continued to provide assistance on as, as, on as, as needed basis to various contingencies within this Whittnall School District since 2010 through the present. Can you explain that?
Sure. I've taken calls and provided support to current board members, current administration, current citizens since my tenure came to cease, including consulting on the bonding and lack, and defeasance of the bonding project related to the whole athletic facilities. So my counsel has been very indirect. I've continued a lot of my professional activities or beefed up my professional activities. Very active in the Wisconsin Bar Association tax section where I'm, sit on that board. I'm in the WICPA tax session where I'm an active committee member and recently testified in Madison related to an income tax symposium, whose charge it was to issue a report to the governor for his upcoming budget proposal process. So I'm very connected with the state legislator as well as the community members. And again, to summarize, related to your question, my support has been indirect but still active.
Thank you. You certainly have been attuned to what's going on at the state level over the last 18 months or so. I ask you to look into crystal ball a little bit and I realize it's, you know, an opinion more than else. Where do you think the, the most challenging things we are going to face with as a school district and a school board, say, over the next six to 12 months and maybe even beyond? Act 10 is still new. We have, you know, a Dane County judge that has ruled it, you know, unconstitutional. Where do you think that whole thing might end up? And I know it's just an opinion, but.
Well, your question really is two parts. What are the challenges going to be near term, short term for the district at, at the state level? And I think Act 10 is just one of them. The superintendent released his budget recommendations to the governor today related to providing additional aid to districts, I think like somewhere in the neighborhood of 2% the first year, 5% the second year, because it's biannual budget. As you know, the last time the state superintendent did that, his recommendations were not included in the governor's budget and I'm not sure they'll be included this time around. There's significant pressure at the state level, actually from the federal level, because to the extent that we continue to near a fiscal cliff and continue to worry about federal tax cuts and spending, whether we end up with decreases or through sequestration or not, those pressures are going to be pushed down to the state and they will ultimately push them down to the school district. So the fortunate thing for Whittnall is the fiscal conservativism that's been exemplified on the board for many years has kept us in a good posture. I think you're going to still be, have to maintain your vigilance and it's not going to be an easy task. Just as, until Act 10 came in, we were thinning and thinning and thinning with expenditures exceeding income, you know, estate aid and, and revenue to the extent we needed to look at budget cuts. And we went through a series of years where we tried to prioritize what budgets cuts might be in place or not have to be in place. I think as we move through the cycle, the economic cycle, until we see a growth from where we are today, say a, a 10% or a 15% growth, which isn't going to happen because we're in a slow growth mode, I think we're going to continue to see an additional tightening. Well, so we're going to continue to go through that process. It's just going to be something that we're going to have to, to be vigilant about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We've heard all four of the candidates. Are we ready to vote?
I have a question. At the personnel meeting, you, or was it a green flag, yes, that three was the majority? No, I heard?
Four is the majority. Four out of six is the majority. So the candidate who gets four votes will be the successful candidate. So what we'll do is we'll take the first vote and see where we're at and then we'll vote four more times after that if we need to until one of the candidates gets four votes. If none of the candidates get four votes, then we will not be appointing an additional board member.
So a total of five votes?
Yes. The first one to get an initial feel of where we're at. If somebody gets four votes right off the bat, then that's fixed. Okay? And there'll be paper votes.
One other clarifying question. So if a vote is three to one, which could happen, for example, three, not the majority, you still look at?
We still need four votes. One, one of the candidates needs to have.
Was that the advice of our council or was that statute?
It's in the policy.
It's in policy? Okay.
So what we need to do is we need to vote for the candidate. They're all very good candidates. We need to vote for the candidate that we feel will help us move the district forward I'd really like to thank all four of you for coming forward to fill this position. Each one of you, you know, bring something a little bit different to, would bring something a little bit different to the board. Each one of you are excellent candidates in your own right. So we'll see how the vote goes. Richard Cola. Richard Cola. Richard Cola. Heather Givitch. Heather Givitch. And Luann Bird. So that's three for Richard Cola, two for Heather, and one for Luann. So we will have another vote. So, so yes, we have another vote. Sorry, John.
So are we narrowing it down to the three or are we doing all four again?
Three. The three who received votes. How did you know the vote was going to be three, two, one, Bernie?
Let's go to Vegas right now.
That is that crystal ball you were talking about.
Better head to Vegas.
Richard Cola. Richard Cola. Richard Cola. Heather Givitch. Heather Givitch. So now we have three, three. All right, we have to vote again.
Thank you.
Richard Cola. Heather Givitch. Heather Givitch. Three to three. We have two more votes left. Heather Givitch. Richard Cola. Heather Givitch. Richard Cola. All right, now we have four, four votes. So Rick, congratulations.
Thank you. Maybe.
If you're ready to take the oath of office and join us at the table, Stephanie would be ready to do that. And Clayton, can you move down to Kathy and we can sit at the blank place?
I think if you could raise your hand, say, Anthony. Aye.
Aye.
Having been duly elected to the Board of Education of the Whittnall School District, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Oh, you gotta do little, short little things.
I have been duly elected.
I've been duly appointed.
To the Board of Education of the Whittnall School District.
To the Board of Education of the Whittnall School District.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities, so far, I guess.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Welcome back. We're not successful this time, but there's always another time, right? So with that, we'll move on to the number four, the consent agenda for a approval of new course proposals for the 2013-14 academic year. Okay, TJ? Is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie? Any discussion?
These are all new courses?
Tony or Jackie?
Yes. Are they replacing the other courses or?
The English is, and the FIA is a change in sequence. So FIA, there will no longer be FIA nine, 10, 11, and then elective. We have E9 and then we have elective and the DCS select.
Thank you.
Rick?
Jackie, on the new AP courses, do you anticipate sufficient enrollment because we have a minimum?
Hopefully, or they won't run. Hopefully, or they won't run.
Other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the new course proposals. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. New course proposals pass. Number five, reports. A, two-twenty contract.
I'll take that one. I believe, two weeks from now, it'll probably be Joel making the presentation because he's going to the two-twenty meetings now. But this is basically the general information that Tom would bring first, saying we have thirty-nine kids. We anticipate three of them, you know, or three openings from graduations. And typically, you maintain it in that thirty-nine range, plus or minus a couple of kids. It'll depend mostly on what seats we would have available, what grade levels, because we don't want to push our enrollment at a grade level up over capacity, so you'd have to bump and add a section or something along those lines. But this is basically pre-meetings with Title I and MPS, where we get the actual numbers. Just kind of preparing.
Questions? Thank you. Five B, strategic plan, strategy update by administrative team.
Is that team going to be in the way?
You're the team.
You're the team. There is an I in team. Oh, is that team one way?
No, we're good. I'll try not to block people.
While he's getting ready, each... all of the administrators are assigned to one of the strategies. And if you remember back to that last meeting we had in April, they were charged with meeting with an expanded committee, which involved community members, teachers, citizens, and then fleshing out those strategies, which is where they are right now, once you approve those strategies. That pretty much is the entire outline of the strategic plan. And then they fill it, they'll have follow-up meetings to fill in, like the process objectives of how to get there and measure it. So...
So, hopefully, you saw in your board packet the proposed goals that we were looking for. I put them all on one slide and made it look very... just kind of threw it all up there at once, just so that we could see just how much text and went into the whole thing. So, I wouldn't expect you to be able to read all of this right now. We're each going to go through the area to which we were assigned and that we worked, and kind of explain to you, first of all, who was involved. Secondly, some of the general discussion topics. And then, third, present to you the actual goal in its form. So, I had the pleasure of working with student achievement and career readiness. And I put our theme there, raising the bar locally to compete globally, because I think that's something that each one of our groups, as you're talking, will continuously come back to. The committee was a small one? Just kidding. It was quite big. Quite a great group, consisting of myself and Joel Green, Wendy McQuishon from the district office, but more importantly, consisting of teachers, counselors, Don Schwartz, a very prominent local name. We had Ovina Fernandez, a current student and her father, who's a parent here in the district. Susan Bushan, who's also a parent and high school site counsel, and John Hushak, who is a parent and alum. So, we had quite a broad span of folks whose students are currently involved, and they definitely were very involved in the process, excited by the whole piece, and they're looking forward to your approval of their goals, because they would like to move forward with the action planning. So, our main... our topic mainly focused on the two main components the district is currently focused, the Common Course Standards Initiative and how we integrate those, and then the Plan Do Study Act model that we talk about for collaborative release. So, we explained that, and the team came up with this goal, that by 2015, one hundred percent of Whitnall teaching staff will consistently design and deliver lessons and assessments aligned to the Common Course Standards or college and career readiness standards. And that'll be measured by the assessments and the lesson plans themselves, as well as summative anecdotal information, rubrics, assessments, meeting minutes, all that great stuff. So, the group basically said, if we have to do all this Common Course stuff, we need to put a time limit on that and move forward. Our staff is already working toward this goal for this year. Second discussion centered around the three As, which I had presented to you earlier this year, attitude, aptitude, and achievement, and our triangular communication model, student, parent, and school, and college and career readiness. So, the discussion was, how do we most clearly communicate and plan for college and career readiness, and how do we build those into our current structure? So, they came up with two goals. We tried to limit ourselves with the room. First is that we will develop and implement an effective K-12 college and career readiness information management system that is accessible and includes a comprehensive communication plan and framework. Basically, the gist of that fancy-pantsy goal is this. We want parents and students to be able to, very early on, take an inventory of their interests, their aptitude, and their attitude about school, and be able to start planning college and career from a very early age, in kindergarten, and start tracking that and being able to come back to that. And it includes anecdotal information, examples of their work, and also includes their standardized test scores. So, the idea is, how do we build a system like that? What will it look like? Where will it be housed? And how do we visit that? The second piece, or this third goal, is to develop, offer, and systematically track college and career readiness, experience, opportunities, and resources right here in the district before students leave. And that came out of the discussion of the FIA courses, but also, we have an internship, and a lot of people aren't aware of it, we have an internship with the Hales Corners Fire Department. We have students who actually work on the ambulances as medics while they're still students here. We have students who get certified as nurses assistants while they're still students here. We want to put that together in a comprehensive program and advertise those opportunities so that students are able to be working real jobs while they're high school students earning credit. The other example was that last year, we had added a number of positions in the district for our students. They actually get paid by the district to do things like manage the theater, the sound, the lights, possibly do some videotaping and video editing, those type of situations. So, that was our group. Are we questioning, just going at it here? And then, everybody, okay. And up next, district culture and climate, which is...
The Culture and Climate Committee in the old strategic plan was student engagement. So, the first thing that we did was look at the previous plan and kind of analyze where we're at in terms of meeting our goal. And the one area that we didn't really accomplish in the last strategic plan had to do with transition. So, my group included a senior, Billy Schmidt, and then I had guidance counselors from each of the levels, and then Matt Jala, who is a high school teacher. We had a high school transition group that worked over the summer, and he helped to lead that. So, the guidance counselors were Mike Newman from the high school, Jim Gabelman from the middle school, Jennifer Larson is at Edgerton and at the middle school, and then Christine Russ from Hales Corners. So, the goal that we looked at is centered around the school transition, and we want to look at all of the levels, so transitioning into the elementary school, and then transitioning to middle school, as well as to high school, and then, obviously, the final step of transitioning to the... whatever you're going to do in your post-secondary. So, by 2015, Whitnall School District will design, implement, and effectively communicate a comprehensive transition program designed by K-12 staff and students in parent collaboration that effectively meets the needs of students and parents at all levels, and is utilized by one hundred percent of students who are engaged in some aspect of school transition. So, one of the things that we're engaged in right now as a group is really just listing out everything that we do. And it's pretty incredible when you look at each of the levels. There are a lot of things that we already have in place, and one of the things that we need to do is get those all articulated and communicate them to people so that they can participate in the services that we already have in place that we might be underutilizing. So, that's kind of our first step in our action plan.
Can I give a clicker? Communication kind of ties into all of the goals in some way, shape, or form. There's probably a lot of ways that we can connect. But first, we'll talk about our committee.
Well, there's more of us than just Chris and I.
We're all here.
Eric Grant also joined us, and we do have a number of parents that are interested in continuing with us. What we did to begin is, we reviewed the previous plan that we'd been working on for the last four years or so. And as you probably remember when we presented before, we did accomplish a number of those action steps in the plan, but there were a few things we didn't do, or things that we felt, you know, we really need to continue these. One of the things that we never went back and did was to resurvey our stakeholders to see how we had done on all of the things we put into place. So, that was where we kind of began with our goals. And we would recommend that, once we resurvey our stakeholders, we would have some data to be able to sit down with our parents and who are interested beyond the committee to start developing an action plan.
Yeah, the last survey was done in 2009. There were twenty questions directly related to communications. We would like to revisit the survey. There were about six different areas that that survey... it was very comprehensive, and a lot of people participated. But we would specifically be zeroing in on the twenty questions that dealt with communication.
So, knowing that we never really went back to see how we did, we kind of rolled over the goals that we originally had, hoping that we're going to more than succeed our fifty percent measure. So, internally, by 2015, we'd like to be able to say that communication among our students, teachers, administrators, board members, and parents will improve by at least fifty percent as measured by our locally developed community survey. Externally, by 2015, the district will improve public perception by at least fifty percent as measured by locally developed community survey as well. Okay, similar to the other strategic plan groups, we had to review what we were doing, had done for the last few years. And we were actually, the Nissen Facility... You told me to turn. Try it. I did. Had five members, myself, Matt, Doug, and then two parents who came forward with interest in this area. One, because she has a lot of background in facility, facilities and building and that type of background within her workplace, her former work experience, and another parent regarding finance. So, that was our team. And what we did is, we really... we looked to take the three aspects of the former strategic plan, which talked about finance, personnel, and facilities, and we put it under one large goal. The personnel aspect, we really felt that had been pretty well taken care of by making sure that we had staffing resources. Our staffing plan really took care of those needs. So, we really are focusing mainly on facilities and financing, finances. And so, bottom line, we're looking to successfully implement a capital improvement plan that'll address the critical improvements needed in the district infrastructure. The other aspect to this, obviously, is how do you fund it? So, we've already begun some of our action steps just this past weekend, and touring some of our board members, and we'll continue to do that into December as we start to build an understanding of what those needs are in the district.
Nancy, the... this is just the presentation part, and over the next several weeks, as, you know, you've developed questions and you have... or if you have any questions about the process, make sure, if you will, forward them to me so that we can talk about them at our admin team meetings. And then, you guys always get the minutes from those meetings, you know, granted, a week later, but you can see the kind of discussion that goes on around those meetings. And then, one of the things we... at our last admin meeting, we talked about was making sure we replicate that school perception survey, because that was community-wide. It wasn't just school and parents or teachers, it was the total community. And we want to make sure we get that out. And I talked to Bill, I can't remember his last name, Cluster, and a little bit earlier about that. And then, I think we'll have Chris and Lynn will probably lead the charge on getting it out. It won't just be focused on the twenty communication issues, but we'll make sure that it's timely so things that have already been accomplished, you know, we won't be redundant on that. So, we're going to move forward with that as well.
Okay. Anyone have any initial thoughts or questions on the presentation?
A couple. I realize you have action steps under each one of these goals. Laurie mentioned, you've already implemented one or have conducted one, and I know it's coming. Do you have those recorded somewhere that you can share with the board in terms of your action steps? I'm sure that you'll be adding them and amending them, but if you could share the action steps also, I think that would be interesting. And there seems to be a magical date of 2015.
Yeah.
And I was curious as to what's so magical about 2015, other than my retirement.
Go ahead, Tony.
The magic of strategic planning is that you shoot for a three to five-year window.
Okay.
And just general rule of thumb, if you shoot for three and you happen to fall within five, then you're in a good place, allows for adjustment. I think a lot of us just... I mean, from my perspective, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but five years out is a bit too far to kind of envision. Three years keeps you on a nice steady path. So, I think that would be the best one. And also, as to get to your action step piece, I know, at least with our group, we don't have any action steps yet, because we're waiting for a rule of this, and then the group's going to reconvene, so we haven't necessarily... you know, I think some groups have more clearly delineated action steps than other ones, like Chris and Laurie. Lynn had talked about, obviously, they have their survey, and that's their big action step, which I think is going to work. Matt and Laurie talked about the fact that they were doing the building tours as their first step. So, I think it's... once this is all settled in, then we can get you a nice clean action order.
I think it would be helpful if we had that back there.
Which one? Does that need to...
What Tony, what they had up there?
Oh, okay.
What's not in the fourth package?
Okay. Yeah, we'll send it as a separate one, plus it's probably pretty memory-intensive. And then, a lot of the groups that already started, you know, that Plan Do Study Act, that's basically action research, and they started those forms, and maybe we can send some of those out that they sent my way already, so, good idea.
How often do we check or measure success or failures?
In regards to this, I mean, otherwise, pretty mu... I mean, on a weekly basis...
There's mechanisms in there, I see, to check them.
Right.
How often is that?
It depends with the... which one it is, you know, if it's on... map testing, we can do that quarterly. If it's on the ACT, that's a yearly one. But you don't wait to find out if you failed, you know what I mean? You can see trends over the past couple of years, and our ACT trend has been pretty good, and their goal is to keep it going up. And so, all the things, including like what you... when you approve the realignment of some of the courses, those are aimed at that ACT career college readiness score. You know, it's hard to say one thing, because it's a broad spectrum, whether it's quarterly or annually.
Well, there are some easy... there are some items there that are... that you're testing, can you gauge real quick? But communication, for one. How do we gauge if we're being successfully communicating to the internal and external?
And they'll have those measurements, but we're also positioning ourselves. One of the suggestions that I brought back is that we have a customer service survey right on the front page of our website. So, anytime you have contact, if you... whether it's at Edgerton Elementary, or Hales Corners Elementary, or the high school, or with me, you can fill out that survey and click submit. And... And, you know, that gives you immediate feedback, and, which is what we're looking at. One of our yearly goals is to focus on community engagement, and that's hard to do unless it's more active. You know, you can't do it once a year or once every three years with a survey. And you guys help us stay on top of it by saying, when was the last time we did that? Because sometimes it can, you know, with the daily things, you want to make sure that doesn't get pushed to the back.
Any other questions?
Morning, Kathy. Can you just make sure a copy of this gets to all of us? Yeah, it should be, because it was public.
Anything? Okay, thank you. So 5C, high school representatives report. I'm the only representative here, Clayton, so.
I am.
You want to tell us?
Well, my name's Clayton Anderson. I'm the treasurer of Student Senate at Wino High School. Kind of what we've been up to, last time I was here, we talked about our homecoming. That was very successful. I think we raised close to, yeah, we raised $4,400. So kudos to us, to the district.
And where did that money go?
That money's going to get divided up three ways, our POMs team, our CHEER team, and then Student Senate. I know that for sure. Next was our haunted hallways, which we have every year. It's kind of directed towards middle school and elementary school students. The high schoolers put on like a haunted house through the school. It's a great fundraising event, and we donate money to a charity, local charity. I think we did the Alzheimer's Fund this year. We raised $600 for that. So that was the highest then, since I've been a part of Senate, so, my four years. So I was very pleased with that. Upcoming, we have our blood drive. I'm a big advocate of the blood drive, because it's a great way to have whittile students, get involved with the community, and kind of show that giving blood is also a good way to give back to the community. So that's on the 21st. And then, I know, because I helped out, on Friday, DECA just had their food drive. So that's one of the biggest food drives in southeastern Wisconsin. I think they're looking for another record-setting year of like upwards of 30,000 pounds of food. So we'll have to see on that.
Great, lots going on.
Yeah.
I just have one comment, maybe to chat along. So this is the first I heard that it was actually for, the donations were given to a charity.
Yes.
And I think that would be great to be part of, a little bit more part of the, what do you want to say, the advertising that you do, so.
Okay.
I really think that would be a plus. And to be honest, it's kind of like, people were asking, like, I think it's just a donation at the door, and I didn't know if the funds went to something like a charity, or whether it was just fun, and I would fund, do we get it again next year?
Right. A lot of the stuff Senate does is directed towards charity. We didn't have a pink-out because we had a limited schedule at the football games, but Senate does the pink-out, and we do donate money to the breast cancer awareness fund.
Which is, and this was great, so.
Thank you.
And I did pass the information along to Hills Corners Elementary, their Facebook page.
Okay.
As well as there's one that's for youth football, and Lauren Heitzen's really good about broadcasting, and if you want to, you can contact me, we represent that.
All right, pretty much what's going on with the high school. Not too much more to say. If you guys have any questions, concerns, comments?
No, I just want to, well, can we make sure that whoever, who is your Senate instructor?
Advisors, we have Mrs. Townsend and Mr. Bowman, our advisors.
Can you confirm with them that they have a representative for, on the first board meeting of every month? Because I think Clayton was here for a different presentation.
Yeah, I was here for a different presentation.
Senior or junior?
Yeah, and I'm sure, Jack, you'll do that.
Okay.
Some miscommunication somewhere along the road, and we'll figure it out.
And then, can you kind of give them an understanding of what we're looking for, you know, give them an opportunity to showcase what the Senate's doing, and have a, it's a vehicle for them to communicate what's going on with the school, the students, to us, so we're all on the same page. If you could do that, that'd be great. Thanks, Clay.
All right, well then, let's move on to 6, new business. 6A concussion legislation and management plan. Mr. Ellertson.
I apologize for my attire. I was in the Dells for the athletic directors conference, and I backed down just for the board meeting. So please excuse me. This is my sitting and listening to people talk at me, clothing comfortable. A while back, when I had came to you with the new athletic code, I did tell you at that time that we were making final preparations for our concussion management plan at the high school that would make clear to the board members exactly what the expectation is from a legal standpoint, on how we deal with and train our people, and then follow through with our student athletes when it comes to concussions. The document that you have in front of you details everything that we are required to do, and everything that we are now doing at the high school level, to make sure that we are, first of all, in compliance with the law, and then, second of all, that we are doing our absolute best to make sure that our athletes, if they are injured, they do not return until they are at a level where they were before they were injured. So we take great care to make sure that everybody comes back when they're ready, and not necessarily when, say, a coach feels that they're needed. One of the important things that I want to point out to you is, in this document, Wino High School is currently the only high school that I'm aware of in the state of Wisconsin that is requiring every athlete to be impact tested. Impact testing is a pre-concussion measurement. It's done on the computer. Our athletic trainer does it. What it does is it measures brain functioning of a pre-concussed athlete. If you ever receive a concussion, you can take the baseline, you can take the test again, and you have a, for lack of a better description, a healthy brain functioning level, and then you have a concussed brain functioning level. Use that as one of the tools to determine whether or not brain functioning has returned to that pre-concussed normal, quote-unquote, "normal" level. And we're the only ones that are requiring that. It's a recommendation that was made by the law, and because we had started, before the law even went into effect, we had, we had started voluntarily having the kids take the impact test. Then the law came out with the recommendation, and we said, let's just make this thing mandatory. It's of no cost to the district at all. So if you have any questions about this, I think, I think it's very comprehensive, and it's going to go a long ways to make sure that our coaches, our staff, our administrators, our nurses are clear on how we're supposed to respond if we have an injured child, and then what levels of communication that we have with home and with our teaching staff. So.
In a, yeah. Under Section 4, Concussion Education for Coaches, 4.1, 4.1, are all those people trained, administrative staff, coaches, licensed athletic trainers, trainers, and school nurses?
It is required, I'm just going to read it, okay? It is required that each year, the school's administrative staff, coaches, all the trainers, school nurse will have reviewed the concussion management plan and a copy of the CDC's Heads Up Concussion High School Sport. The management plan is just finished this evening, or when it gets approved by the board, and then it will be reviewed by all those people. That is, that is the directive of the plan.
The other question is, being a football fan myself, and it just came up today, you hear coaches, and you addressed it a bit, a little bit, you know, over, or getting eager to put somebody in, and they're not ready to be put in, or during a game, mostly football, maybe wrestling, I'm not sure, are there consequences for that coach or trainer to not abide by the rules and put that person in?
Our trainer that we currently have would never put an athlete back in the game if they suspected that they had a concussion. There's a protocol on the sideline that has to be followed, and our athletic trainer follows it absolutely. Where you get into trouble is not in the game situation, it's at a practice situation. Before this legislation, coaches were not trained on how to recognize and evaluate an athlete that they suspected may have a concussion. So basically, they relied on a kid to say, yeah, I'm fine, or, you know, rub a little dirt on it mentality and get back in there. Now, what we have is a legal document from the state of Wisconsin, and then we will have in board policy this document. And it's like any other thing that's violated, if it's law or board policy, there will be consequences if it doesn't follow. I can assure you that our trainer would never, under any circumstances, put any athlete back in, into a game if they suspected concussion. And because they follow the protocol, the athlete, they would determine right there on the sideline if there was a concussion injury. And now, our coaches during practice have the ability to make that same determination because of the training involved. All the coaches in the fall sports were trained on how to make a determination on a concussion, if they even suspected, the kid is referred to the trainer. There is no more practice, we call home, kid gets picked up, we don't take any chances with it. But to answer your question directly, yes, we would have some issues if somebody thought it better to put a kid in that was injured.
And, you know, the problem that I see, kid wants to play, you know? So is there someone watching for these hits? I mean, are the coaches watching? I mean, they're also play calling, whatever else they're doing. There's just someone, and the trainer could be attending a different person. And a lot of times, we see, it's not always just the big crushing blow, but it's a snap of the helmet that hits the ground. Is there somebody watching specifically for this?
Part of the sports meetings that we have, and part of the documentation that is required by athletes, parents, and coaches to sign, is that you've been trained in what concussions are. You, you understand that you have a legal obligation, because the law says you must report concussions. The kids are exceptional at saying to a coach, for example, wow, that was a pretty, pretty big hit. We had an incident in a FIED classroom where the kid said, hey, so-and-so banged their head, something might be wrong. The kids understand it, because we've trained them on it and how serious it is. Is everybody watching every single moment of every play in every sport? I would say, I would tell you that I don't think that that would be the case. However, my experience would be, if somebody takes a blow to the head, the first thing you'll notice right away is they're usually not really sure what's going on, and you can see that in a kid. That's one of the most obvious signs of concussion, is somebody that's not quite with it. In the Eisenhower football game this year, a kid got up after a really big hit and started walking back to the other team's huddle. You know, although everybody saw the hit and immediately action was taken by our trainer, when you see some kid acting funny like that, you know something's not right. But no, there is not 100%, 100% of the time that you're going to know that this has happened. You have to use your best judgment, and if you suspect it, there's protocols that you must follow.
Thanks, Rick.
It's just funny to comment that I have read other groups' concussion management plans, and this is probably one of the most clear and thorough ones I've seen. And as a parent who's had a child go through the experience of having a concussion, this, seeing this and how this is laid out gives me a great level of comfort.
Good.
On what to expect as a parent, should it happen to my child in a FIED class or in a sport. So I think this is a job well done.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Any questions? We're not scheduled to.
There we are.
Discuss and take possible action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm trying to get it done for you, buddy.
Hey, I appreciate the effort. Thanks.
When do the state rules require that it be implemented by?
I'm sorry?
When do the state rules require it be implemented by?
We had to have all of our training for coaches ready to go in the summertime, actually, summer of 2012. The legislation was passed in May, and we, so all of our summer baseball coaches, that was the first group that was legally required, they were all trained.
The training's, but I'm saying the plan itself, that's part of the requirement of the legislation?
Having a concussion management plan was a recommendation of the legislation. We took it and made it our requirement.
Just wanted to point out that he was in the Dells all day at this conference, drove back to do the presentation tonight, and now he's driving back to the Dells for the conference again.
Yeah, one more day, one Monday.
Drive safe.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Drive safe.
I know how to make an exit.
All right, 6B, discuss and take possible action on vehicle replacement proposal. I believe this was brought to the Finance Committee already. So who's taking this? Matt?
Matt, if they have questions, why don't you feel it?
I do have questions. What are the safety concerns?
I'd say primarily age, age of the vehicles, and maybe some of the...
You talking about the new vehicles?
No, it's the current vehicles.
Just, you know, the fact that it's a, they're probably, I mean, maybe the general impression is that because it's an older, used vehicle, doesn't have all the nicer, you know, yeah, if Lo wants to take it.
Twice on the drive, and it'd break, the gas pedal stuck on the little van, it's mostly been the little van. I mean, if we were going to keep one, even though the big one's only valued at a thousand bucks, it's probably the safer of the two. But the little van, I didn't even get, I was driving to 124th Street, and I wasn't in the middle of traffic, because 124th isn't exactly the freeway. But it, you could tell it was dying, I made a U-turn and almost made it back to the school to Edgerton, and actually had to kind of cut across the grass to get it off the road, back into the, onto our property, and then walk back from there. So it's, the, the safety concerns are now at this point of their ages, you know, are the, is the ABS going to still work? The newer vans have higher levels of anti-roll. I mean, remember, three, four years ago, all the stuff in the news about vans rolling over and things like the full-size vans with lots of people in them? And they're, they're a lot safer than they were previously. And we've had kids that rode in the vans that have made comments about not feeling safe and secure in them.
Well, I, I...
There's one that was a testimony down there.
I attest to that.
After we took our tour on Saturday, we went by the vans, and on the outside, they look, they look fine, little surface rust on one. And so I, I took a ride with Matt today on both of them. Everything, everything on the vans is optional, or is operational. The brakes, I didn't find that the brakes, I found the brakes to be right up there, I found the steering to be tight. They do have age to them. There's good tires on all four of them, on all four, on both vehicles. The only thing that I found that wasn't working was the electric door locks on one of the units. Now, I will say, it was just Matt, myself in there, it wasn't eight people in there, and that, that does make a big difference. But when I, when I drove them today, I didn't, I, there was no pinging on the engine, they didn't swerve, so I personally, with two people in them, didn't see a safety concern.
What is the age of each one in the mileage?
Yeah, and the age of the, the age of the Astro van is 2000, the Chevy Express is a 2000.
2001.
2002.
2003.
2003.
The Astro van, I believe, when Quinn and I drove it, was that the one with the, had like 101,000, and the other one has 94,000?
Yeah.
They had about 100,000, just below 100,000.
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think my experience is that the district goes to extreme lengths to maintain its equipment, whether it's vehicles, or buildings and grounds, or all assets, with the utmost care, because we're very concerned about safety, first of all. Second of all, I think, I mean, just best practice, and you can say it's a fleet or not a fleet, but best practice in asset replacement is to not let something have a problem before you get rid of it, but to use some type of useful life forecasting at which point you replace the asset. Having, you know, I think we've all have experience owning vehicles and cars and whatnot, and there's a point of no return when you say, "Well, it's the last time I need to repair that." And having a daughter who's experienced an accident a summer or two ago, where we had about 90,000 miles on the Jeep, and it ran fine, but guess what? The struts and suspension, everything was just about shot, but you didn't know it was just about shot, you know? But then it's shot, and then it's too late. So again, I just, I think a best practice is, is what you're really proposing, and, you know, that comes to time when is it, you know, the useful life? I don't think the tax tables tell you that, you know, a, a, a five-year life for depreciation is, is unreasonable or not unreasonable, and like you say, when we maintain it as well as we do, you can keep it longer, but I think, look to your, your experience in determining when that...
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I mean, we have a lot of equipment, and you guys are going to start to see things like that in a long-range plan, because, you know, we have tractors, we have moors that were purchased back in the late 80s, early 90s, and it's all coming kind of due to the end of their life cycle. These vans, you know, do fall into that, so I do agree with your statement.
Since this wasn't budgeted for, where is the money coming from?
All of us. We have, we have a surplus from the year before, the last fiscal year, and we budget a surplus this year. So the money is there for a capital purchase along this line.
Is it wise to replace both at the same time, or is it better to replace one and rotate?
I would prefer to replace both, in that we, going back to Rick's point, you know, that's our, we can track this forward, you know, for the next five, six years, look at the progress, you know, that we're making on the vehicles maintenance-wise. I can tell you right now, we're spending about $3,000 to $5,000 a year just maintaining those vehicles.
You're probably getting better pricing from your people from just getting two instead of one.
Yeah, Hiller was pretty aggressive, or I should say Ford, actually, because Hiller's just the intermediary. We actually get the quote from Ford, but the pricing was good from Ford, so...
I do have to compliment Matt on the maintenance part. You know, when the brake issue came up, he had his guys on it that day. And then, obviously, the, when it died, we took it right in and...
Yeah, we have a pretty good relationship with a lot of the local garages. If one can't get us, you know, within 24 hours, because obviously we need the vehicle the next day, usually somebody else will pick up the slack, so...
What is the warranty on the, on the Fords?
I didn't prepare any of the, any of the warranty information. I could certainly get you that specific, like, drivetrain warranty or something like...
Kind of the standard old...
I'm, I'm assuming it would be...
Three, three-year, $36 or something like that.
Did you look at that? Does it, because Ford's got a five-year, 100,000-powered truck.
No, I did not, no, I did not look at any warranty information. I prepared this panel.
And are you suggesting that we purchase them outright?
Yes.
But what I, what I was suggesting is after the board approves it, take the options to the finance committee to make sure that whether it's the lease or outright purchase, and that information, they can say, "Yeah, this is the best way to go forward with it" once the board's approved it, I think.
This would be a good time for me to get your warranty information too, or any other...
I'll comment on that. There's an implied interest rate with any lease option, and you're going to be somewhere in the 5% to 7% range. I mean, if we took $37,000 out of our contingency fund, that contingency fund's only earning about probably 30 to 40 basis points, so it wouldn't, I, I would not consider a lease option to be the most economic at this time.
And Matt, it doesn't state in here, but what year are these vans?
They're brand new. They're 2013.
13?
Yeah, there's, you know, with these type of vehicles, I don't think Hiller has them on their lot, so there'd be a little bit of a lead time, you know, trying to find one or find two maybe in the same color, because we wanted to go, but we can work out some of those details after approval at a finance meeting.
You could get one blue and one gold.
That's a great idea.
And could you share a couple of examples of, like, how they're used throughout the, you know, throughout the week?
Well, right now, we recently had started transporting students between the middle school and elementary schools. And that's a, I can't really speak to the what, that, why they're doing that, but I know that one of my custodians has to drive the vehicle to transport kids. We're also using it quite a bit with the specialized kids. Obviously, athletics uses the vans after school for road trips, and frequently, the road trips that they take are, you know, and upwards of 200 miles. I know the, I think it's Forensics just took a pretty long road trip in the Astro van, the full-size van, so they get used for club activities, and we really don't use them in my department, you know, for running to the hardware store and things like that. They're mostly used for student...
During the school, during the school week, it's hard to find one available because they're between athletics and the, the special ed staff, taking kids to either job placements or alternative ed opportunities, or transporting kids between schools. I mean, they're, they're going at least through dinnertime when the, the after-school activities are finished. And that's if they don't get booked for an overnight trip.
Those ones, if you have some students who are accelerated, they go to the school.
There you go.
Matt, your purchase price you requested includes the reduction for the trade-in?
Correct.
So I'll move to approve the purchase of 240, 158-passenger vans for Hiller Ford with a total cost, net cost of $37,054.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the two vans. Are any other questions or discussion? All right, then, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right. Thanks, Matt. Okay, now we have a presentation on the nature pod. Clayton.
At your, at your places there, you received an email that was addressed to me, and it's from Scott Jaquish, and Scott is the director of the Park and Recreation Program at the city of Greenfield. And so you can read that, but he was definitely in favor of this and talked in the email about how the Park and Rec staff could be supportive of this initiative as well, so just for your information.
I don't have a clicker, so I can advance the slides, right? Not as fancy as Tony.
Well, this will be my first formal presentation, so pardon if I stumble. My name is Clayton Anderson. I'm a senior at Whitelands High School. I'm the treasurer of Student Senate. I feel like I'm very active in our school. I'm very actually concerned with the nature pod. But first, I want to ask, I want to get the point across of what disc golf actually is. It's very self-explanatory. It's golf, but you play with this, frisbees, yes, burning bees are for you, drive, approach, and putt. Disc golf has grown in popularity since the 1980s. It has become really popular among high school students and college students. As you can see, there are over 163 courses in the state of Wisconsin, closest being Valley View in New Berlin. There's also courses at Drupsko, Grant, UW Parkside, and Whitewater due to their popularity. What is great about disc golf is that anybody can play it, so I know I, I like it, I know Matt likes it, it's a blast. Right now, any questions about what it actually is, the premise of it? Okay?
Understand the game.
Well, here's the nature pod. As you are aware, it's underutilized, it's 5.4 acres of underutilized space in the district. And living in the district, I can see the negatives of the nature pod on a daily basis. So what I want to do is I'm proposing to take the nature pod and turn it into a frisbee golf course. Pretty much all that's needed are some woodchips, concrete, and baskets. The benefits from this, the course will eliminate unwanted activities, there will be a, because there will be consistent foot traffic through the nature pod. Also, with the construction of the nature pod, we will be taking out a lot of brush, so the visibility will increase greatly. What I want to do, what I would like to see is this nature, this course incorporated into the school's curriculum through physical education classes, so have a gym class go outside for unit. I know as a senior in gym class, I would love to go play some prots in gym for an hour.
And I just, I'll just add to that benefit, too. Like, at that middle school, they're going out in the nature pod right now for their life sciences classes. None of that would be interrupted. It would, if anything, would be enhanced because they'd have more room, more area to, to walk around, instead of just tightly woven deer trails that are through there right now, so...
The course will also attract a lot of people, hopefully will attract more people to the district. I know as a school, we're always looking for more students and community participation, so hopefully this will help. So what I want to do is I want to build a nine-to-12 hole disc golf course within nature pod. Holes usually range between 150 and 300 feet. It would be nice to kind of use light, utilize the open space at the middle school fields and have maybe a couple 400-foot holes or 350, maybe a little shorter ones. We'll be utilizing the current paths that are in there already, maybe taking a couple, couple feet off, five to 10 feet off each side, to make it a little bit more open. The course will hopefully go through the terrain naturally, it will flow. Like I said, the brush removal will increase visibility. The wetlands in there will not be touched, and we'll get rid of the invasive species as well. So here's kind of a timeline, just a quick overview of what we want to do. Obviously, we want to look for your approval. Then we're going to notice neighboring homes, there's, I think there's five lots that border the nature pod. We'll have to have, notify them and have them bring up their concerns, see if they like it or not. We want to fundraise for the groups, and it could start as soon as December, and hopefully you can end it in simply the spring, so we can have it for the summer. Matt, we can go a little bit over that. These are just some of the clubs and the student organizations and possible PTO donations that will be used. I know Dr. Holtz said that he would approve most of the funding, but I would like to raise roughly between $2,000 and $350. This is our kind of, this is a layout of our budget. The baskets we were looking at, we can get anywhere from like $315 for the really cheap ones, or we, me and Matt were looking at baskets from Innova that were like 500, is what you say? Maybe a little less than that?
Yeah, a little less. Innova, the disc golf companies have partners with, you know, school districts, and they actually have correctly written around disc golf that could be utilized in the gym class. So Innova's one of those companies that, if we decide to move forward with this, that would work with us on the pricing of the baskets and maybe eliminate some freight charges and things like that to help facilitate it. They also put me in contact with a course designer out of Madison who would, on his own, you know, free of charge, come out here and just kind of walk the nature pod and evaluate it, and kind of work with the kids to help kind of put the course together, so there's some options.
And then, we've also been in contact with Greenfield Park and Rec and the city. Greenfield Park and Rec said that they would be more than happy to donate, like benches, garbage cans, et cetera. I know the city of Greenfield would be interested in donating, have labor come out, help us with it, having, using us, using their machines, so that would be great, clear brush. And I'm also going to look out, look for the community support and student support and helping remove brush and doing kind of the construction, layout, everything.
Yeah, we haven't formally approached the city yet, but through Scott Jaquish at Park and Rec, we've kind of had some conversations. So we'd be asking this, the actual public works people would be to help assist, you know, mulching up all the, all the trees and, you know, buckthorn and everything that they get out of there, just, then we can just put the woodchips right back onto the trail and not have to truck it or move it or anything like that, so...
It's actually very easy to maintain. We will be, we'll have some grass in there, so like I said before, there are natural paths that will be cutting, that will be going through, so however often those get cut, would be very similar, not, not much more.
Yeah, we're already, we're already maintaining the, you know, to the best we can with the equipment we have, all the, all the trails in the nature pod, so...
I know Environmental Club would be more than willing to help volunteer clean it up, maintain it trash-wise. Pretty much, that is, I'm just looking to benefit the district and rid of a problem that I know the board has been having for a while now, so... Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yep?
That's an extremely ingenious and great idea, Clayton, and I think it's doable. I think that the presentation was very well put together. So there's only one thing I know historically that might be an issue, Lo, did you, were able to look into any of that stuff?
Yeah, Kathy and Debbie Jones went through the business manager's office, he's cruising around the world right now, but they found the file on, we didn't find the actual deed. We went through the file, and the, the fact that it was a nature conservancy seemed to be talked about more as an idea rather than a requirement, and so we saw, we found nothing in there. It's, it's only a half inch thick. You know, we found nothing in there that said, "You can't do anything but that." We're still going to maintain the, using it as an outdoor ed-science environmental type of area. This happens...
It's like double duty usage.
Yes.
Which is, I think, as I understood, that, that's, that's the way to do it. What I was asking the superintendent about is, we came upon this then because someone gave it to us, and so, it was even before Lou, but I, I couldn't recall if the restriction was based in the deed such that it was an easement, or if it was based on the board approval of the gift, what would be called a contingent gift, meaning that we accepted it with a certain contingency, and if we don't abide by that contingency, it may revert back to the previous owner. So probably something, you just want to be clarification in a short letter from the attorney that says you can do it, but...
Over the next two weeks, this won't get approved until the next board meeting, but Kathy is already committed to tracking down a copy of the deed, because that's public information anyway, I would assume.
But I think calling it double duty, where you got the impetus of what was to be there, the nature conservancy not really changing, in fact, maybe embellished by the cleanup, where, you know, you take out invasive species and you open up area environmentally so that undergrowth that's natural to the area can regrow, is probably something you can hang your hat on, but it still wants something. The last thing you'd want is to do this and all of a sudden the family hears it and says, "Give me my property back."
Well, I know...
Do you want that? I don't know.
And I don't want, I don't want to put TJ on the spot, but I know we talked about this when we were building our athletic fields, and I thought we had done some research.
We did. We did. And this goes back to Matt Corby Day and Karen Petting.
Karen, is that right?
Yeah, and it was, there was white paper on it, we just got to find it. That is, it was free, the understanding that we had, that I have, and I think you have Nancy also, is it was completely our property, do what we wish. And that's how we got into the conversation, we talked about the athletic and all that kind of stuff. But to your point, that's exactly the way we can phrase it and keep it in tune. It is, I have to, because whenever it comes to this decision, I'm going to let everyone know that I'm going to recuse myself, I'm not going to be involved in this vote because my son is bringing it forward. But I will tell you this, this was not my idea, this was completely his idea, and Matt. He came to me a few months ago and said, "Dad, I'm thinking of this," and I'm like, "Well, Clay, that's fabulous, you need to go through the proper protocol," but I asked him a specific question. What about the nature pod bothers you? What, give me your answer again.
Drugs, drug abuse, that's mainly one of the big reasons I've been trying to do this. I see it on a daily basis here at the high school. People come... I see on a daily basis at the high school, people coming to classes intoxicated, people leaving classes to go get intoxicated, that's just a shame, so.
Well, I got, I got a big problem with that, not with you. Because I, when I, after I got elected, I went around and I, I had a meeting with Mr. Wazowski, and I asked him about this because a parent friend of mine notices this also. And I asked Tony, and at that time, he told me, there is no problem, he's only had one time that drugs are found in a car. Now I see in your report that it's a major problem, and I have never heard of that being a major problem. So, why aren't we know, why don't I know about it not being a major problem? It is a, if, if, if kids are coming to school intoxicated and leaving and going to get intoxicated, why are we finding out from this now?
Well, right now, Clayton, you know, he's, he's in there with the kids, he might know something I don't know. I think I've probably had arrested over five hundred operating and influence people in my life, and I would recognize someone if they're in an influence walking down the halls. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, and sometimes when you say, happens all the time, it's a generality. I do know that just this past summer or spring, it was in the Greenfield patch about marijuana growing back there, and I even called David and said, it did not happen at the school, could you rephrase your headline? And he did, thank you, David. So, he's the patch editor. And so, we should know, everybody on the board, that that was in the, in the news, and the two kids who were arrested weren't from our school district, thank goodness, they were, one was from a neighboring district and one was an adult out of school already. And it just happened that somebody playing with their son ran across it, and I think they were an off-duty police officer and recognized what it was and went from there. So, I don't, I wouldn't say that. I, I would choose to say all the time might be an overstatement.
Yeah, I was making it to that.
But I still love you, Clayton.
And that's where, that's, that's, I brought it up for this specific reason, because when we had this conversation, he said essentially the same thing to me, and I said, Clayton, a lot, your perception, your ideas, your thoughts are coming from one perspective. So I said, you need to look at it from the perspective of, perception becomes reality. And I've tried to teach that to him over the years. So, yes, no, indifferent, if there is a problem, we know there is a problem in the nature pod. We as a school district, we know as a school board, we have had situations in the nature pod, because we have brought, people have been brought to us for expulsion because of the nature pod. And I think that message has gotten out to the community and to the kids, that that is an accessible place. So what I had to mention to Clayton was, let's take the opportunity to take the option away and use a nature pod for better purposes, purposes, and have it a perception that it's a good place to be instead of a negative place to be.
I saw John's hand first.
Yeah, my question is about, have you guys thought, in the, in the interest of safety, have you guys put any thought as to how you would de-conflict some sixth or seventh graders going through there and some, for a class, and some people with the discs through there for fun?
I think insurance would cover that.
No, I mean.
Oh, what do you mean?
I'm talking about how would you de-conflict the concept of two different uses of the space at the same time, whereas you might have a class going through there for their nature study, or, well, primarily the nature study, but also for gym or something like that, and then other community, or neighboring community.
Yeah, it would be, it would have to be through the U C signage, you know, during the regular school day, these are the hours that, of course, are available.
So the idea, would you, you would post?
We'd post it, we'd have, there it is, we marked off, we have.
And then how would you deal with the violations? Because the risk of a violation isn't just, you know, what are you going to do about it, but it's the risk of you've got some kids going around there doing their science thing, and somebody gets hit in the head by a disc from somebody that decided not to read.
I could, I could research your question, there's a.
Putting these things out to think about.
There's some other school districts, and, and working with Clayton on this, had contacted the Elkhorn School District, because they had recently put in a, a disc golf course right on their middle school grounds. So I could maybe get some answers back to you on that, to see how they're kind of risk-managing the whole course.
Just, you know, I'm, I'm not looking for any answers to me specifically, but I just want that, am I right, Chris? I just, I just want that, that thought about and dealt with, because I sure don't want the kids getting a disc in the head. And I don't want to also, down the road, with not having thought about this, go, well, I guess we can't use it for the kids anymore, because there's a risk of somebody getting hit in the head. So we approach, we kind of notice this problem now and figure out how to, how to handle it, and then how to handle violations of it, so we can keep the kids safe, then we're not losing the use of it for the kids, the community does gain out of it. I see your, your concerns are valid for sure, and I mean, my son and I hit number three times this past summer when I had a chance, so.
Yeah, and through the course design too, it takes safety into account, so we're not throwing discs, you know, directly, kind of like a golf course, you know?
They never go where, where, well, where some people.
Well, the, the good, the good thing about the nature pod is that there's so much cover in there, that the way we can construct the fairways will help that with safety, but certainly posting signs and, you know, maybe just getting, once, once it's, once it's out there, people understand that, you know?
Just wanted to forecast the problems.
No, I think it's a valid point.
Historically, we, I mean, we've had, we had people using the softball fields like during the school day, people are very receptive, we just would go out and say, I don't know, signs, okay, just during the school day, it's a risk to students, and people are typically, they don't tend to violate it on purpose. So, we've, we've had some experience that way, and a lot of the regulation comes from either teachers or, or students who go to classes, and I don't dare to say somebody there, just let them know, and we want to let them know, bring the school resource officer maybe too, and, and, and we really haven't had any issues, as far as people in the community are coming outside in.
Clayton, thank you for, for the presentation, and certainly thank you for taking such an active role in your community, that's commendable, and thank you for doing that. Your, your figures, your financials for the project.
Right.
Can you pull that?
I can plug it back in, but we're, right now, we're on the low, on the low end without going through all the computer stuff. You know, the reason why we've put the five to fifteen thousand dollar number out there is because the ba, the cost of the baskets is going to range probably pretty close to three thousand dollars, depending on the manufacturer you go with, like I mentioned, Inova, the educational discount, we might get there, but also the type of course we want to build. Once, once, once this thing gets going, maybe there's more brush removal than we want to do. Maybe there's, maybe we want to do concrete pads in there, it's, so, trying to keep a pretty wide range there, because the scope isn't really fully defined yet, we haven't walked, you know, the, the course, Clayton hasn't walked the course with students to kind of plan how the holes are going to go in. So, that will come, you know, those costs we can tighten up once we get a full scope.
All right, I guess I would ask that, when we get to that point, I'd like to see that brought before the finance and facilities committee with, with tighter numbers, and also some, some more specific plans about the fundraising efforts and your expectations and your resources for the funding.
All right.
I guess, well, one of my thoughts kind of ties in with, you know, kind of having the plan, the fi, in the finances, as well as all in our lives of communicating with the, to the community, we'll put the idea out there, we're not going to approve this right away, and, you know, we can't approve this anyway without the details and exactly the agenda, but to give the community an opportunity to notify, you know, the residents that back up to it, and just have it out there for general community comment before we, you know, before we would approve it. And then I guess my other thought with this discussion is, we probably should use our, our school officer to kind of make sure that they patrol over there a little bit, just, you know, because just even once you put in, you know, the, if you do the disc golf, it doesn't necessarily mean that all our problems are going to go away, because there'll still be some, so it is an area that still would need some.
Heather, did you have a question?
Oh, um, did you want me to come up here and stand there? Well, great job, first of all. Kind of along with what Eileen said, it's, you know, just putting bigger paths isn't necessarily going to eliminate people, kids going over there. But second, is this going to be, my question was, like, long-term, it kind of seems like it's kind of an expensive Eagle project, like something you're very passionate about?
Right.
Like, how do we know, like, is it going to become a bunch of rusty baskets, you know, once you're graduated? Like, is there a, a long-term plan for?
Yeah, the, the baskets are all of galvanized steel construction, so you're going to get at least ten years out of them. Of courses like Valley View, you know, and sometimes county courses will leave their baskets out year-round, and.
So it'd be something where the district, like, it would become another area where it'd be known?
It would, yeah, yeah. It would be maintained right at it, like it is now. I know clubs, I know Student Senate, I've talked, I've brought the idea out to them, they were contemplating on going forward or not, so if I work on that, I'm sure that could be something that we incorporate into our schedules. I know NHS would be looking forward to that, it's something to definitely work on, like you said, Eagle Scouts, Environmental Club would be another big one that we could approach on. So, there's a lot of clubs that could help with this too, through the school.
Do other places charge a fee for people to?
No, you can come and go whenever you want, go in the middle of the night if you want to, so.
They do have.
No lights over there.
We have no lights, no.
No lights, but.
Oh, we do, but like golfing, it's dark too.
Yeah, well, they do, they have.
You have glow in the dark.
They, they do have glow sticks they tape to them, they, McGowan ago has a real fun nighttime.
Have you researched, what approvals do we need from the municipal level, from the state level at the D N R, which means planning commission probably, which means drawings, architect?
I started those conversations with Chuck Erickson at the city. Basically, the wetland, as long as we don't bring in any grading equipment and level anything or changing the topography of the land, we're fine, we can pretty much do anything we want to do in there. Obviously, we don't want to design a course that's going through it, because people got to still walk it, but we can't build any bridges or dams in there. From the city's standpoint, it's our land, you know, we can treat it how we want, the only thing they ask is that the city forester come through and label some of the more nicer hardwoods to save, and then also, they have this initiative at the city to get rid of the ash trees, there's quite a few in there that they probably want to take down as part of this project, too. The other thing that I just learned about today in talking with Clear Channel Outdoor is they're going to be doing a project with the city for arbor day, and what that is basically going to mean is they're going to provide services and dollars to tree, trees, plant trees, I'm hoping to take advantage of some of that within the district already, based on our relationship with them, so I'm hoping that maybe, when, if the timing is right, these two things could come together and they could also, you know, help out in the, in the nature pod, so.
Did you not have a conversation with D N R? Or you did, I thought you.
Chuck Erickson at the city, yeah, he's their economic developer guy.
Right, didn't you say to me earlier that you had a conversation with some D N R people out there?
Not D N R directly, but just Chuck Erickson, because he's the expert in that at the city level, and he, it felt that as long as there's no disruption to the wetland, as far as grading goes, that there would be no, no issue if people walked through it.
Other questions for Clayton or Matt? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and six D, presentation of policies on monitoring use of copyrighted computer software and internet safety.
My name's Eric Karan, Educational Technology Director for the district, here for an initial presentation of some policy changes and also a new policy for technology within the district. Why are we doing this? A couple of reasons. First of all, there's the Federal Child Internet Protection Act, often called CIPA, and in two thousand and eleven, the FCC handed down a number of rule revisions to that, and we need to keep up to date with that, so we are being mandated from the federal government on down to make some of these changes. Last year at the SLATE conference, that's the Statewide Educational Technology Conference, DPI convened a legal review team there and asked all the tech coordinators that were there to come and listen to that, and so they actually hired some attorneys from Madison to come in and present to us on these topics. And one of the things that was strongly suggested is that every district in the state go back through their technology policies and review them, because many times the terminology, the concepts that are in get outdated, and districts don't often update that as needed. And so I've initiated that review here, and this is the first time you're kind of seeing some of that work coming to the board. The other one is E-rate funding, so under those FCC rule revisions, we cannot reapply for E-rate funding for next year until we put some of these in place. And so for this current year, we got twenty-three thousand dollars, I would assume that's something we want to keep getting from the federal level on down, so we need to change some of what we're doing here in terms of our policies. At the current meeting tonight, you're going to see the copyrighted software policy, bringing this one because it's a quick and easy one, it's very minor revisions that have to be done to this, the most minor of any of the policies that need to be reviewed, and then also the internet safety policy, and this is the new one that's required by the new FCC regulations, by CIPA law, and it's also time-sensitive, so that's why we're seeing that here tonight. At some future meetings this school year yet, there's six other policies that we have currently that need significant revisions in terms of their outdated terminology and concepts, and then this will end with a bring your own device policy coming before the board for approval, but we're a, a long way off on that one yet. So, the copyrighted software policy that we currently have, why do we need to make some changes here? Well, the ownership of software is changing, and some of the software being used in the district now isn't always district property, we don't own it, we didn't buy it, and that's the nature, as we go to the mobile technology space, businesses are changing, we're changing, our policy needs to reflect that, that we don't always own everything that's being used within our buildings now. And then also the traditional framework of how this was done, it was always a top-down district purchase, buy the license, put it on the school computers, and we use it, that's changed as well, as we look at bring your own devices and that thing coming, and that type of stuff coming down the road. So, real quick, the changes are here in red, and I do apologize, board members, you got a black and white copy that probably doesn't make this real clear. So, there's some strikeouts there of inappropriate terminology, and the newly updated stuff is in red, and if I have to, I'll send you guys a new copy if we need to do that. So the first one there talks about duplication of copyrighted software, that has changed. A few years ago, last time this was updated was two thousand and four, and in those intervening years back then, it was pretty much unheard of that you were allowed to duplicate software. We have a number of district purchase software right now, where we are permitted by license to duplicate it and actually hand it out to staff and students. And so this, you know, the language is reflecting that change in some of the licensing schemes coming down from the various companies. The second one there, the next one where the strikeout is, deals with who actually owns the software. Right now, we have a number of personally purchased software items within this district, mostly dealing with laptop software and iPad software that the district does not own, but we should reflect that when you're within the confines of this educational environment here, you still need to adhere to the agreements put forth by those license holders and everything like that, so that's what that language is, is reflecting right there. So very minor changes, again, a couple of items that, you know, help protect us and everything and bring us up to date with this policy. Next one is the internet safety policy. This is a brand-new policy coming up, this is the one required by the FCC for continued E-rate funding. We cannot reapply for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year until this policy is in place, and I can't emphasize enough to the board, this is time-sensitive. The timeline basically is this, we need to have this done by the end of this calendar year, not school year, calendar year, so by the end of December, because the federal application timeline for the following year's E-rate funding starts right after January first, with the new year, the new calendar year. The earlier you get in, the better chance you have of getting higher-tiered funding. Of course, we want our best opportunities as a district, I'd like to be sending that stuff in that first or second week of January into the FCC for approval, and I cannot, until we have a certified board policy, we actually have to send a copy this year of it. Requirements of the policy, so, board members, you got a very long, I apologize, thirty-page-ish-long legalese document, public, if you guys were checking that out, you saw it, it's a lot of pages of legalese, that is the. That is the actual, uh, rule changes handed down by the FCC. Um, it distills down to these items there, these certification items, that we are educating our students in appropriate online behavior, that we are educating our students in social networking, chat rooms, and awareness of cyber crimes. This is a complete 180 from their old policy. The old policy was, never touch social networking, never use it in an educational setting, do not let your students near it, blah, 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 put up a big steel wall. They did a whole 180 on this and this was the bulk of the presentation at the state conference was, hey, the kids are going to do it anyway, we better educate them on how to do it right and be aware of all the dangers out there. By the way, we are implementing curriculum as such, it's called ISAFE and that kicks off tomorrow, uh, across the district. We also have to certify education for cyberbullying, both in awareness of it and then also responsive, you are victimized of cyberbullying. And then the last one is a, a no-brainer, that's the carryover from the old rules, which is that we certify, we have web filtering in place to block inappropriate content. We have to have those things in a new policy, it has to be called an internet safety policy. Um, I had sent to the policy committee, I believe Bernie, you got that, a couple of samples of what some of our neighboring districts have done. I will tell you, there are a whole lot of districts in the state that have not done this yet, are in the same boat, they're rushing to get this done right now. Uh, we did find a couple, Kathy, uh, went and got us some example policies that have been re-upped by districts in the last couple of months that do reflect these. And so, off of that, I distilled those down into a policy for Whitnall that looks like this. And a lot of this really comes to what we were presented at by that legal team, um, at the conference as well, which was, keep it very short, very sweet. Districts oftentimes, these were three and four-page-long policies, I said, don't get into detail, put in there what the FCC and the federal government require and keep it general and if you do get caught in a court case, let the lawyers figure it out. So it, I mean, that was, we were told that over and over and over again. They do recommend on this one, I know a lot of our proposals we do internally, this one they did recommend that we should send to an attorney for review. So that was, that was their recommendation. They said, review all your others, update the terminology as you see fit, go ahead, but this one, um, because you need to be in compliance with the FCC regulations, they did recommend getting a law review on it.
Have we done that yet?
No, we have not. And so what I'm...
Or the two weeks is up.
Yeah, and that was kind of what this was. It's the initial proposal tonight so the public could see it. Um, I'm really hoping we can get the policy committee together real quick in these next couple of weeks, take a look at this, we'll send this to our lawyers, um, and, and we get that all looked at and then come back to the board with any minor revisions and, and a vote hopefully at the next, next meeting possible.
Before you spend money on the lawyers, uh, WSB, which we spend money on for annual fees for, has a policy, um, library.
We do, yes.
So, and they have their own lawyers, which they fund with the, what we pay them for their annual fees.
They do reviews though, Dr. Holt's?
They may already have a boilerplate policy in place that you can take off the shelf.
They, well, that's what we called for and we asked for any of those policies. They sent us examples, they do not have a standard one yet made out for that. Again, this is all kind of coming down and being pushed, but we, we have that deadline unfortunately to get to, but they'll do the legal review for us, we'll, we'll go with that.
We'll ask Dan Mallon first from WSB and then, um, if he's willing to say yeah and give it his official okay, I mean, you would think he would. And if he's not, then we'll find out who in the firm does that.
Any other questions?
The last, the last paragraph you asked us in here, is it needed?
Yes.
That you're asking us?
I, well, the policy committee, I think that needs to go to, to ask for that. Um, so everybody knows, I was asking in the bottom paragraph if we should have that in there and need the policy committee to take a look at that.
What is your opinion?
That we need to do that? Absolutely.
That needs to be in there?
Yeah.
I just have a question regarding the firewall or the filter that you're going to put on. You and I have had conversations regarding this, but I, I just go back to this, back to my own experience, I have a daughter who is pre-med right now and when she was here, she's taking anatomy class, and one of the conversations they had was breast cancer and that was the topic. And she couldn't, she had to do all of her research away from school. With this, are we going to allow them to be able to access it, access that information?
Here's, here's what we've done, we didn't have, prior to my being employed here, there was, uh, wasn't a real clear-cut way to get sites opened up. Um, I mean, the content filters are really automated, it's, it's computer systems looking for flag words and that kind of stuff to block that kind of stuff and we have blacklisting, we call it, and that kind of thing. Chris Kopp can tell you this, is, I've pretty much told him, he runs the help desk, teacher finds an address they need access to, they send it in that help desk, he reviews it. If in doubt, it's opened it up right now. Because that's really what the FCC is saying coming down, is you as a local school district, you still govern your own ability of what's appropriate and inappropriate. In fact, they actually make a clear statement in all that legalese that the federal government will not tell you what's inappropriate, you define that at the local level. But, you should consider everything open with very few exceptions. And so what we've done is pretty much said to the teachers, if you find something that's being blocked by our filter, send it to us, we'll look at it quickly and within a day turn it around and open it up for you. And for the most part, we have, except for a few, a few sites we've gotten and...
It just, it just comes up and I get an email, it's automated, the teacher clicks on a button, submit to the site, I get an email, then, an hour usually I'm working on it. And if it comes up and it says adult, then I contact Eric and I, to let's discuss what are they using this for and contact the teacher where it's going. If it says classified as an adult website, um, and then a few later I can figure it out.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, part of our job right now, then I have to make some judgment calls on that. We just had two the other day. And one we opened up, even though, again, there's some material on there, could you get to something that a few people might deem inappropriate? Absolutely. But it has an educational value, it is not adult or pornographic in any way, shape or form, and we opened that site up. We had another one though that a teacher really wanted and I said, it took me three seconds to find pornographic, inappropriate material on there, I'm sorry, we cannot justify opening this up, I can't justify the educational purpose for it. You know, ultimately, if a teacher requested beyond that, then they have to go to Dr. Holt's and sue them. But really, we have opened up a tremendous amount of sites over the last year. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Always a good presentation.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, number seven on the agenda, comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. Comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration.
I do. I'd like our, um, building principals and our executive director of academic achievement to give a report on our report cards that we received from DPI. And I'd also like to know more about these major problems at, uh, nature pod.
Anything else? All right, board member announcements, anything?
I have two. Thursday night, I was privileged to be at the Edgerton PTO meeting and Heather was bearing her role as secretary. Uh, once again, a lot going on at that school. Uh, it sounds like they've got some very successful fundraisers in the works and movie nights and good community building activities as well as a fairly successful box top. Heather, do you remember offhand what the total was? Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but...
We raised one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars from the local board. Him stood out as, um, thousands of box tops and it was a really exciting event to have. I mean, that's a lot of money for bringing everyone, this is a cardboard.
Yeah, so, very, very strong parent involvement at that school. Uh, and then Mr. DiUqisto pointed out that when the article ran for report cards in Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, the one that was used as the example was for Edgerton Elementary. So we got a little bit of a, a plug in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel for, for how good Edgerton looked, so that was, that was kind of a nice thing that he was able to bring up. Uh, my second announcement is Nancy and I were both privileged to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Mitchell McWinn on Sunday. A very, very moving ceremony, there was hardly a dry eye in the house, honored veterans as well as his efforts with the Veterans Memorial and it was great to see the community turn out and supported him and it was great to see that project come as such a successful participation, so, one of the couple of fun things that we're able to go do. All right, very impressive young man, he's a junior, so we'll have him in Whitnall for another year yet. Any other announcements?
I have an announcement, um, on Saturday, December 1st, the Rotary Club always holds their, um, I was at the craft fair and teachers with Santa. And just a reminder, Rotary Club, um, the funds that they earn through those types of projects, they support scholarships, um, for our students, so it's always a good, good thing to come out and support. Um, and then I also chair a Christmas house, which is at the Lawson Bed and Breakfast, that same weekend, the 30th, the 1st of December and the 2nd. And the funds from, the proceeds from that, that will go towards, um, the Hills Corners Park and Pool, um, and the Historical Society.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to discuss administrator contracts.
Salute.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, so we need a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Eileen?
Aye.
PJ?
Aye.
Bernie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session.
Thank you very much. Here.